Thank you for attending tonight's meeting of the Westerville City Schools Board of Education. The agenda is displayed on the screens in the front of the room. You may also follow along by connecting to the district's website, www.wcsoh.org. Click on the district link and then select Board of Education and the Board Doc's Agenda and select this evening's meeting. There will be two opportunities to address the board tonight. The first being Agenda Item 6.01. The first set of public comments is relative to Agenda Items 7.01 through 11.03. Please state the agenda item that you are referencing at the beginning of your comments. The second opportunity to speak is Agenda Item 12.01. There's a sign-up sheet located on the table in the back of the room. Each speaker will have five minutes to address the board. And with that, Ms. Hendricks, will you please call a roll?
Mr. Byrd.
Here.
Ms. Davidson.
Here.
Mr. Velardo.
Here.
Ms. Cotter.
Here.
Okay, if everybody would like to join us with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For the next agenda items, 3.01 through 3.03, they are District Recognitions, and we will have Mr. Velardo addressing those items.
Thank you, President Cotter. This is really one of the most enjoyable things that we get to do among the many enjoyable things that we get to do. We get to recognize some outstanding people and work throughout our district. So I'm going to be calling a few people up. I will go to the podium now. I will ask Dr. Kellogg and the board to stand up front here, and after people are introduced, they will come up and shake hands and get high fives. So if you'll bear with me, we're going to go right to the podium. And I apologize, I did not invite Ms. Hendricks to join us, and we are thrilled that she will be able to join us for this recognition as well. The first recognition is for the Martin Luther King Jr., Faust, and Alston Award winners. At this time, I would like to invite up Reverend Vaughn Bell and Matt Lothe, Lofi, sorry.
Dr. Kellogg, members of the school board, thank you for the opportunity for us to be here tonight to honor four dynamic leaders who represent our school and our community. In January, leadership Westerville and the Martin Luther King Breakfast Committee celebrated four great leaders that represent not just the schools but our community. And each year, our community, I'm sorry, our committee receives numerous submissions for both awards, and this year, we couldn't think of four better recipients. Before we have them come up and Vaughn introduce them individually, just wanted to share with you and everyone here in attendance about each award just briefly. The Faust Award is named after William Faust, who was born here in Westerville and in 1884 became the first black graduate of our high school, and several years later graduated from Otterbine University. And then through many years of inspiring the youth in the community in which he worked, he came out and said that one of his goals was to be a bridge builder for the youth who will have to cross that broad, deep chasm of ignorance. So the Faust Award is given to Westerville area K through 12th grade students who exemplify the characteristics demonstrated by Martin Luther King Jr. The Alston Award is named in honor of Miriam Alston, who had inherited nine slaves according to her husband's will. The remaining 81 were then supposed to be divided by his four nephews, but Alston contested that and was then able to attain 21 more of her husband's slaves. And after her death in 1855, all 28 were freed because of her wish and what she was able to do. So the 28 freed slaves then left with Jesse Marley with the stipulation that they were never to be slaves again and were to be taken to a free state, which ended up being right here in central Ohio on what is now Africa Road. And the Alston Award is given to a Westerville business and community leader and member who exemplifies the characteristics demonstrated by Martin Luther King Jr. Again, we couldn't think of better recipients for this award this year, and Vaughn Bell, who's on our board and leads our committee, will be here now to introduce each recipient.
Thank you again for this opportunity to be before you and with you as we celebrate great leaders in our school district and city this evening. As the award recipients come forward, if you would please, if you would come up and start with Dr. Kellogg and shake everyone's hand and remain up front. We will start first with our first Faust winner, Ms. Olivia Haynes. Olivia is a third grader at Faust Elementary and is truly a friend to everyone. Olivia stands out because her heart and her passion is to make sure that everyone feels included and that everyone has a friend. Olivia, this is truly a marvelous and wonderful leader in our community because Olivia is not only able to be friends with everyone at school, but she has also organized a small group of students to come and clean up the playground and the property even on weekends when necessary. So Ms. Olivia Haynes. Our second Faust Award winner is Ms. Kate Clark. Kate is an eighth grader at Walnut Springs Middle School, where she has been instrumental in starting the UBU Club. The UBU Club is designed to be a safe place for all students at Walnut Springs to ensure that Walnut Springs is an inclusive and welcoming environment, and Kate has been instrumental in making sure that Walnut Springs is a safe and welcoming place for everyone. Ms. Kate Clark. And next we have, excuse me, Ms. Jada Walls. Jada is a senior at Westerville South High School, where she serves as an ambassador not only for herself but for other African-American students and students of color. She is actively involved in South's Black History Month productions, and she takes great pride in her culture and her heritage. She's an outstanding leader, not only at Westerville South but also within the community. She serves on student council, and Jada really stands out because she does what's right, not because it's popular, but simply because it's the right thing to do. Ms. Jada Walls. And the 2018 Alston Award winner is certainly someone who is not a stranger to any of us, and that is Ms. Lula Mohammed Barnes. Lula, she gives and promotes respect between and among cultures. She serves as a liaison to the Somali community for Westerville City Schools, and her nominator wrote of her, and we know this to certainly be true, that she is generous to a fault with her time and the ways in which she serves not only the Somali community but the greater Columbus immigrant community and the educational community here in central Ohio, truly makes her a special and wonderful, kind, and loving person. Ms. Lula Mohammed Barnes. Thank you very much.
And really, I thank you to you, Matt, to you, Pastor Vaughn Bell, for facilitating this and encouraging this leadership. It is right and good and authentic for us to honor these students and Lula for the tremendous amount of work that they do. So one more hand for these fine people. The next recognition has to do with the Columbus Symphony Orchestra. You may or may not be aware, but the Columbus Symphony Orchestra honors music educators around central Ohio. And the 2018 Music Educator of the Year for Secondary Education is right in our district. The Music Educator of the Year, and that's in recognition that music education is not tangential to education. It is a core part of education. So Mr. John Lazwell, would you please come forward? First, I have something to read. "The Columbus Symphony has announced the winners of the 2018 Music Educator Awards, honoring individuals who make a difference in the community through a dedication to music education and promotion of greater understanding of and appreciation for the art form. Mr. Lazwell, during his tenure in Westerville, assembles under his leadership, ensembles under his leadership have gained recognition both at the regional and at the state level. In addition to his teacher duties, he currently works as one of the Westerville City Schools' secondary music facilitators, working with district administrators on scheduling, equipment purchasing, professional development, and in-service for the district's secondary music educators. Mr. Lazwell is somebody that I know. He happens to be at Westerville South, but I know in recognition of this award, I am sure that is a reflection on the tremendous amount of passion that you have not only for music education but for this district, and we are tremendously grateful for your work." Now, if you stand there for just a second, I'm going to point out one other thing. After Olivia got her award, she skipped back to her chair because she was so excited to receive her award. Ladies and gentlemen, who would like to see Mr. Lazwell? Mr. Lazwell? Thank you, that's tremendous. The next award that we would like to honor is the recognition of Civitene, the Special Education Award. And to give this award for special education honoring that teacher, I'd like to invite forward Candy Klein and Craig Sidalis.
Okay, I'm Craig Sidalis. I'm president of the Westerville Chapter of the Civitene International. We're a civic organization that has a special emphasis on special education in special needs community. We have an Easter egg hunt, which this year will be our 51st annual one that we do. We also have a dance and a splash party. So in keeping with these ideas, we decided we needed to recognize the special education teachers because of all the hard work and sacrifices and the impact that they have not only while you're in school but for the rest of your lives. And Candy was on the committee, and she will tell you about how they implemented it and also introduce our winner.
As Craig said, this year, we initiated the Special Education Professional Award to honor those who work with children with special needs. Donna DeTrey, one of our members, proposed this award, formed a committee, and brought the project to fruition. Unfortunately, she couldn't be here tonight. Ms. Glass solicited nominations from within the district, and many individuals were nominated. This is an excerpt from the nomination letter about the person who was finally selected. "This individual often arrives early and stays late to support both staff and families. She has always demonstrated professionalism and found joy in the daily challenges that are often presented when serving students. Without fail, she has always found strengths in students that build their outlook on their own potential. She mentors staff and others in her field. Her commitment to the district, her building, her students, and her craft will serve as a constant reminder to future recipients the level of dedication that is valued and admired by the community. We announced on February 27th at Walnut Springs Middle School that the recipient of our first annual Special Education Professional Award is Ms. Jill Schaefer." She will also be recognized at a Westerville City Council meeting on April 17th, to which, of course, you're all invited. At that time, we'll present a plaque and a small gift and a plaque for the district that will display the names of future recipients also.
So this is the first time for this award, right?
Yes, sir.
That's wonderful. Jill, congratulations. I know, we know the hard work that you all do in special education and sometimes not as visible. So thank you, and please pass that word along to the rest of your fellow educators. Again, I'm just up here speaking, but we are all very honored to rec-- Candy, did you have something else to say? Go ahead. We have all night, go ahead. Thank you for being here tonight. And I know that many of you will be leaving. There's going to be some pictures out in the hallway or in the lobby out there. Again, thank you all very much. Congratulations on all the awards, and thank you for being here tonight.
Of course, everyone's welcome to stay if they'd like. But award recipients, their families and friends are also welcome to leave at this time. Moving on in the agenda, Agenda Item 4.01 is to approve the minutes of regular meetings held on February 12th, February 26th, and February 28th. We don't actually vote on the meeting minutes, but are there any questions about those minutes from board members? Okay, then we'll go ahead and move on to the next agenda item, 5.01, Roadmap Presentation. I think that we have Jennifer Knapp here, along with some other staff members to present. Jennifer Frye and Greg Lewis.
Thank you. Okay, let's see, okay. It's just going to be there, okay. Good evening, and thank you for giving us the opportunity to share progress on the roadmap to personalized learning. You guys okay?
Yeah.
Okay. I have the clicker. Everything's all right, I got the clicker. But I have to give it back momentarily. In 2013, and again in 2017, student-centered instructional practice and access to technology were identified as key themes in our district's strategic plan.
So we met as a team in 2014, and when we came together as a roadmap committee, it was identified, our vision for student learning and our mission for 21st century learning and teaching were identified. So far, we've really completed most of what was identified in that first roadmap. We've made a lot of progress, and so in the summer of 2017, we reconvened a team together. We reviewed the goals that had been accomplished. We came together and set new goals for the next five years. That was a team of 25 teachers, 25 administrators, and five support staff over the course of the two roadmaps, and so they've kind of helped us to chart the course for where we want to go next.
And during the first roadmap, in alignment with the district mission and vision, we wrote a commitment that provided, to provide, a 21st century learning environment that empowers students. So typical mission, little on the wordy side, maybe hard to get your hands around. So we then created the Learn Rubric. And this was really developed as a tool for teachers to reflect upon the learning opportunities that they were providing to students. In the 2017 revisit, we felt that the committee needed more work, that this still was kind of a little nebulous, and it needed to be articulated more clearly if we want to really talk about what kind of experiences we want for our students.
So where are we now? Last year, as part of one of our district goals, we had, of one of the six district goals, we had a goal to increase our teachers' comfort level with technology integration. And over the course of the school year, we had a 15% increase in our teachers, which resulted in 66.5% of our teachers identifying themselves with characteristics, having a willingness to use technology with students, ability to solve some simple technical problems themselves without getting stuck and then just having to say, "Well, not right now. Guess we're not using it today." Much better at troubleshooting. Getting to a point where they can predict problems that might happen so that they can remedy those before it impacts their instruction. Our teachers are incorporating student participation using technology tools. Many of them are restructuring their classrooms completely into blended learning environments, which a blended learning environment just fuses the best of face-to-face instruction with online instruction, provides greater voice and choice for our students. Our teachers are also providing opportunities that give kids more control over their learning. Another outcome that we've had is the majority of our secondary principals, some of our elementary principals, instructional coaches, our whole curriculum team, some librarians, and other district office administrators have had the opportunity to go through a learning opportunity called Leadership in Blended Learning. It was full five days of professional learning and collaboration. It's really helped our school leaders to understand, better understand what blended learning is and what personalization of learning is and how that can impact our students, as well as how they can provide support to their teachers and to students to developing those kind of learning environments and what kind of culture we need to have in our buildings in order to do that and supporting tools to do that. One big impact that we've seen is that many of our building principals, working with leadership teams, they're actually starting to personalize professional learning for their staff members, and it's been, it's really fun to watch. It's fun to watch their evolution and see how they're incorporating the ideas of what their staff members want and being able to do a great job of setting that standard with their staff because that's what we want with our, for our teachers and our students.
So where are we now with devices? Beginning in July of 2014, we began a phased-in deployment of Chromebook carts to provide greater student access to technology. Through roadmap grants, title, and some building funds, we've been able to achieve a ratio of over two to one, which we're now at around 10,269 devices for students to use.
As Greg has shared, we have completed our goal of going two to one, and as Jen has shared, our teachers have increasingly provided more student-centered learning opportunities. And Beth Eddy was highlighted last week when the state superintendent came to visit. And, you know, she shared a comment, and she said, "You can customize your coffee. We don't customize our learning. Why not?" And she really changed her instructional practice, read the book Inevitable, which was a book study led by Jen Frye and our team. And one of the takeaways was the students felt that they owned their learning in a way that they hadn't before, and that was really exciting to hear. Also, in fiscal year 14, the board committed to supporting this endeavor with an allocation of $1 million for that fiscal year and the following four years.
So the why, of course, the why is the most important reason we're here, the only reason that we're here, who our students are. As we know, our world is changing very quickly. It requires our students to be knowledge workers. They need to be able to analyze, they need to be able to problem solve, need to be highly adaptive. Change is going to be always present in their lives. I was at a presentation today where they were talking about, it's Columbus 2020, and about all of the different careers that people will have, the amount of jobs that they'll have, and that they won't necessarily always have to get a full degree to be able to do those things, that learning continually and being able to evolve will be just always part of our students' lives. Part of that is that they just need to be fluent in 21st century skills, including the use of technology, that that's not a separate thing. Knowing how to work technology and use technology to be able to do your job is just going to be an expectation. So as we continue to shift, we really have to be able to encourage higher-order thinking skills in our students, flexible thinking, creativity, and again, the expert use of technology, including microphones.
Today's learners also represent the most ethnically and racially diverse group in history. Our students have a variety of cultural and linguistic backgrounds and need the proper tools and assessments to diagnose and support their learning. When students with disabilities are unable to achieve their goals as expected, it's important for educational leaders to recognize that need, to integrate tools that will help them be successful. And technology offers ways in which to differentiate that we've just not had before, and they're able to, you know, technology can help teachers focus on what the concern might be. And one of the resources that we have for our secondary mathematics is called Alex, and students will take an assessment and will continue to practice on it, but it provides teachers with an assessment of where students are and their readiness to learn. So they can use this to drive small group instruction because that adaptive technology has said, "Hey, these six are ready to learn, you know, how to multiply fractions, so don't teach the whole class if only six of them are ready." And it's enabled our teachers to be very responsive to what our students need. Also, our economically disadvantaged students are less likely to have a computer or internet access, and it's important that we address this digital divide. In our initial roadmap, we defined our goals and strategies based on the strategic plan and internally defined our needs around the six silos that support student learning. As we continue to refine our work, we have adopted the Future Ready Framework, which is state-supported, and as we will share, provides a variety of evolving tools on how to implement personalized learning practices.
So what is Future Ready? Future Ready is actually a national framework, and Ohio just this year became, adopted this framework as well and is providing support tools for it, including the ability to go to Future Ready institutes. We're even going to be hosting one in Ohio in September. It's supported by ODE, and it's a research-based tool that helps districts to be able to plan and to implement personalized, research-based, digital learning strategies so we can help all of our students to reach their full potential. It focuses on comprehensive plans to achieve student success. It helps districts to transform instructional pedagogy in their practice. And it also focuses on leveraging technology to be able to do this. Much like our original roadmap did, when we had the silos of interest, everything was focused around the center, which is student learning. Future Ready Framework is the same. All of the gears in the Future Ready Framework focus on student learning at the center. That's the most important thing. So, this is a graphic of the Future Ready gears. When we took this assessment that is provided by the Future Ready Institute, we took it as a leadership team and it helped us to, as a team, articulate, what, what did we really want learning to look like in Westerville City schools? What are we moving towards in the next five years? What's our vision? And what was interesting is as we went through it, we went, we had questions around each gear. We ended up, you know, defining a goal for each one of them. And everything that we had done in the summer with the roadmap committee actually aligned with one of the gears in the Future Ready Framework. So, very well-aligned the work that we had done to this framework. The first gear is personalized professional learning. It focuses on providing opportunities to our staff to become skilled through professional learning that is personalized for them. Just like we want learning to be personalized for our students, we know that we need to do that for our educators as well and that they need to have a voice in what their professional learning looks like. They need to have choices. Curriculum Instruction and Assessment Gear talks about being aligned, that our curriculum instruction assessment has to be aligned to our vision of personalized learning. And when you think about personalization, that means different people learn in different ways and that may mean we need different resources for different, for different learners. Use of Space and Time is another gear. It's focused on providing efficient and effective use of instructional time and giving students other opportunities. So, as we think about, well, we have these technology tools, that kind of breaks down the barriers of, we can only learn when we're in the classroom. And what does that look like for Westerville City schools? What does it look like for us moving forward and for our students?
And robust infrastructure was to maintain a robust infrastructure in order to support digital learning. I know this is real important because over the last few years, we've had to double our bandwidth due to the actual usage of internet activity from the Chromebooks that we've actually deployed. Data and privacy, to have tools and policies to the district reflect a strong commitment to using data and maintaining privacy. I know daily I read in the news about cyber crimes. So, I know that this gear is extremely important in the Future Ready gear set.
The goal with community partnerships is to broaden, to broaden them to support authentic student learning experiences through digital learning. So, I thought that would be easy because I had to read that one, right? And I totally screwed that one up. We do want to further develop and grow opportunities for students that provide meaning and relevance and also support our parents to understand and to use the digital tools that support student learning. Budget and resources to align the allocation of our budget and other resources to support improved student achievement through personalized learning. And it was important for us to read these to you because the district leadership team developed and spent, I think, the better part of two days working through and articulating these. So, it's important that, you know, these words have a lot of meaning to us. This requires a close analysis of our resources and how they can best be utilized. And collaborative leadership to establish a positive culture that focuses on innovation and collaboration as a means of providing better educational experiences for students. And as Jen mentioned earlier, we really started to see this as our principals are developing personalized learning for their teachers. It's, it's really exciting to have that collaboration with members of, of all levels, at the building level and at the district level. So, as part of this framing process, the district leadership team articulated the goal of having a personalized learning environment where all students take an active role in designing and demonstrating their learning, which was informed by the work and ideas of the roadmap committee. In the center, as, as we have seen, it's always, it always comes back to that focus on the student. And through our work, it's what everything revolves around. So, they identified four high priorities in our previous roadmap. We had, you know, the high priorities, the medium, and the low. And our learning spaces need to be flexible and responsive to our students' learning needs. In our first roadmap, we had furniture on there and it was a low priority. It's interesting how spaces and furniture have risen to the top to allow that flexibility. And we have, in different buildings, had had the opportunity to have that flexible furniture and it's, it's very well-received. And in the meetings, the staff meetings that I've been able to sit in to get feedback on what they want spaces to look like, flexible and responsive always come up as a point of conversation. So, that's exciting to hear. Not only did the roadmap committee see this, but the teachers in our district as well. We also need to more fully support our teachers by providing those differentiated professional learning opportunities. I believe that was actually number one from the roadmap. And we do, we, you know, we, we ask our teachers or our teachers want to provide differentiated learning experiences for their students. And at the same time, as a district, we need to do more to provide that to them so that they can promote those flexible and responsive modern teaching methodologies and tech competencies. A data dashboard. This provides a single point of access to data for teachers, administrators, and counselors, which interfaces with our various digital products. You know, I mentioned that tool earlier, but wouldn't that tool be great if we could also look at attendance or also look at discipline? And, and really be able to see simply where our students are and if they're not being successful. Were they not successful in the past? And right now, that's a little cumbersome for our teachers. It's, it's not quickly accessible or as accessible as they would like it to be. And it's really to inform instruction. Last are increased access to technology to provide increased access, including a one-to-one take-home implementation for secondary students, which Greg is going to talk about shortly. So, our next steps. We will continue collaborating with stakeholders by reconvening our roadmap meetings. That is our goal. It is to build capacity within the organization and community to implement the goals and strategies that have been defined by the roadmap to personalized learning. We would like to spend the next year to build and implement this advisory committee comprised of several working groups, somewhat focused around each of the gears. We do see some overlapping, so maybe we would have just as many as the gears, maybe a few less. Each group would have an area of focus in which they would provide research, deliverables, and recommendations to the district. And we do feel that the best way to implement this is with broad stakeholder input and support.
So, going one-to-one, how do we do that? Over the last four years, we've determined that the expected life of a Chromebook is four years. So, my plan is to actually replace three grade levels every year until we've actually completed six through 12, through those, that, that three-year process. So, then all students in K through five will be at a, close to a one-to-one in a cart model, which I can explain a little bit more details about that in here in a minute. And then, starting in year four, we'll begin kind of a refresh-maintain cycle from there on out. The next slide, it's going to be a little complex, but let me kind of explain how we're going to do this. And again, this is proposed, so this is what I'm looking at right now. If you take a look at the, the graph and you're looking at the green, the green are new purchases. So, if we take a look at year one, you're going to see that there's nearly 3,800 Chromebooks that we're going to put in years in grade seven, nine, and 10. They're going to keep that. So, if you look at the, the arrow, you're going to notice that they're going to keep that. So, in seventh graders will be eighth graders and then eighth graders will be ninth graders. So, they're going to actually keep that Chromebook through three years. The yellow represents the year twos and the oranges will be the year three. The red is year four. So, the thought there is that we actually take and put those in carts in the elementary so that the batteries will always be charged. So, at that point, what we're going to see is all the grades, six through 12, will have, have Chromebooks that are one to three years old. So, the fourth year, we move them into the elementary. So, then the fourth year, this gets us on a, on a, on a standard refresh cycle. So, if you're taking a look at that, every fifth grader, every eighth grader, and every 11th grader from here on out, will actually be giving a new Chromebook. And they'll keep those for three years and then rotate those back up into the K through five model on that. So, the dollars needed for this. Let me explain this to you a little bit. The dollars needed for this, when we go to one-to-one, I've already budgeted in my budget a refresh of the current model that we have in place right now. So, the two-to-one is in my budget today. So, when we're looking at the numbers, if we take a look at year two, this is when we actually start the rollout of the new devices. So, what that includes are devices, filtering software and tracking software, which we don't actually have in-house because these are actually going to be going home, caring cases, summer storage units, and any home Wi-Fi hotspots that we may have to actually take on for anybody that may not have Wi-Fi at home. So, there's a little bit of a spike on the first year because we're actually looking at older Chromebooks that need refreshed in that same year. And again, these are dollars above and beyond what I've already currently have, have allocated or budgeted for, for the refresh of the current models. Years three through six, you're going to notice, are just refreshes for Chrome devices. So, I'm not into the larger storage units, the upfront cost of the software. So, that kind of levels off from there on out. And that's depending on how many are older and newer and how many refreshes we need to do to get the current models in the elementaries to at least be on that four-year cycle. So, the professional learning.
So, professional learning, as we've articulated for our teachers and our staff, is really a critical component of this as we continue to support them in their journey toward creating personalized learning environments for students. So, that's one component that's been part of the roadmap so far. Money for innovative practices, supporting that. One way we've used that money in the past is, we've had projectors and we have a very aging projector fleet. And we've been looking at and have been piloting flat-panel TVs and seeing how that would work. Would that be a better option for us? Will that be a more economic option for us? But there's always going to be new things that we need to continue to try so that when we get ready for the next phase of things, we've actually done those on a very small scale and gotten teacher input and identified the feasibility of what those technologies might be. And then, the data dashboard, which Jennifer spoke to, is also included in that budget.
And at this time, that concludes our presentation component and we'd like to open it up to questions.
I have a, a couple of quick ones. First, within the 1.5 million in the year two, how much of that represents the actual refresh dollars? And how much of that is net new?
That would all be net, that's all net new on the 1.5.
So, there's no, there were no refresh dollars for?
There, there was some. What we're looking at is because when we do the, the grades that we're looking at right off the bat, we can't funnel all of that back down to the elementary. So, there's about 1,000 devices that we would need to refresh on top of that because we can't move those back down to the elementaries when we did the movement of the carts down to the, to the lower grades.
Okay.
So, there, there is some. And then, that was on top of what we currently have right now.
Alright, and then, relative to the professional learning and innovation, what are the, not what, let's, let me just say, I would like to see that there be some type of outcome metric that is related to that expenditure. So, some way to show that there is more digital activity within a classroom with a teacher, within a cohort, so that we're, we're seeing the actual outcome-based result for the money spent.
So, I would ask, as you put stakeholders together and, and start looking at this, I would like to see parents surveyed to see if they have devices that people would like to use of their own. And also, the need for Wi-Fi. Do we know how many kids would need Wi-Fi? Do we know, does the library have a, a program where they can loan out computers even in the meantime to kind of help some of our kids?
We have contacted the library about that and they have a handful. The last time we talked to them, it wasn't enough for us to feel comfortable with the number of students that we may have to do that. They do offer that program, but I think the last I looked at may have been 10 devices. And I don't know if they've expanded on that. But I'll definitely check to see if they've expanded beyond that.
Okay. And, and are we sure? Well, that's not the right way to ask it. So, as you talk to the stakeholders, I guess I want to hear from teachers, is this the right device? You know, maybe some classrooms need something different. And I know you guys have looked at that a little bit already, but that's information I'd like.
There are cases specifically with, there are cases specifically with our Project Lead the Way courses in which they need a more robust device.
Sure, like the engineering.
Exactly, yes.
Some of the classes, seventh graders needed them for their future city and stuff like that. So, thank you.
Let me ask this question and then I, I'll explain the question because I'm going to ask it and it's not going to make a lick of sense to me either. So, I've been on the, I've been on the Future Ready site, so I've looked at that a little bit. And I like the gears and the obvious, we're working all together gears, working together piece. And we're kind of going into a next phase with the stakeholders. Love Richard's idea of just really kind of getting some outcomes from that. We are using it more in this area. Our students are stronger because of this program. Just that kind of thing. My, my question is around, in this next phase, you mentioned stakeholders of teachers. What are the other two groups you mentioned?
Administrators, parents, governors.
You, so that was my question. You do have some community members on this?
We haven't actually put together anything at this point. This is, here's what we're thinking about. Here's what we'd like to move forward with, but wanted to get feedback on that as well as when we come back to our committee that met, we met with in the summer. We'd like to present that concept to them and have them help us to flesh that out.
Great. The idea was because, you know, we always want to try to get some community input, some, some ideas. What, you know, what are they thinking about? Especially if there's some expertise in this area. And the gear, there's a gear of community partnerships.
And I would say that was a difference from our previous silo, that the community partnerships was not, that, that would be a key difference.
That's what I picked, perfect. That's what I picked up on. I thought that was a little bit of a shift and then the, and then the gear there, I thought, oh, that'd be a great opportunity to do that. Okay, thank you. That's, that's what I wanted to share with you. Thank you.
One question I had, as you look to engage staff and community members more, is if you could check and see, is there a current need by teachers unable to access devices for their students to provide curriculum now? It'd be interesting to know if there's an, an indication that staff feels there are not enough devices at this point in time.
And that's something we hear from our teachers a lot, but one of the things we thought as a next step was that we would use the thought exchange tool that we used with the strategic planning or the facilities and that we would be able to reach a larger audience and get feedback by using that tool.
Go ahead. Yeah, so, so once you meet with these people, you, you said over the summer, I'm sorry.
We met with, for four days over the summer. We met with the roadmap committee. We're planning to reconvene in early April with that group as well as others to bring more people into it.
Okay, and then, when will you report back to us? When will you be able to?
We can develop a timeline for that at that time, if that would be helpful.
Just before you, yeah, move forward, I guess I would like to hear.
In the, as you, as you view this, there's, there's two elements. So, one, I'm going to, I'm going to separate out the additional devices for a moment and focus on the personal learning side of this. And I don't know if I'm asking a question or making a statement, but we'll see when I get there.[1744.34] I get there. It feels to me, separate from the discussion around adding devices and going one-to-one, is the rest of the plan about personalized learning. And so the efforts to perhaps capitalize on the infrastructure we've built, the over 10,000 devices, the professional development we've done, Schoology, the digital curriculum we have purchased, the use we have going on, the emphasis on what classroom should look like around this. So really, even separating out the one-to-one, which is the big ticket item out there. In your mind, the rest of it still needs to happen, does it not? Otherwise, we lose progress or we, we become stagnant and we don't, don't continue opportunities to learn more as we move forward. So I noticed you didn't have school years on the budgeting piece, just if we get to that, when we get to that point, if we want to budget, these are numbers, 10 years from now, those numbers will be different, it'll be, but that investment, aside from that investment, you're not asking at this point for dollars for the additional devices. Start the conversation, keep pushing personalized learning, reinvent the system, so to speak, and see where we get to, is, is part of it. I think that's an important separation. The one-to-one has some other questions associated with it that I think some of the board members are getting at, and it was opportunity. So I appreciate your perspective on bringing more people in and getting involved in these particular strategies or goals and bringing community members in, student voice in, to seeing what the system is looking for. I think that's a, a great opportunity. So for my, from, from me to you, thank you, guys. I know you work hard on this one. If you didn't know, I'm going to pick on Greg for a second. So the state superintendent did visit last week and visited one of our classrooms, but he also visited our Capture the Flag event. So if you ever want to make the guy in charge of IT really, really nervous, invite a group of high school kids in and open the door to hacking a system and, and host it for him, all right? And so, yeah, Mr. Byrd would appreciate what was going on there. In fact, I, we should have invited you, but it'd have been bad of a 13-year-old.
It was a safe, enclosed environment.
Yes. So Greg did a great job, the team did a great job, and I thought that was an interesting event, too. And I believe one of our students won, correct?
That was our student.
Yeah. To give you an idea of the magnitude, the vast number of, of students who visited us came from a program in southwestern city schools that's part of their cybersecurity program that's relatively new. I think it's in their second year, and that was about 20 of the participants came up from that program. So they, so we know that that part of the world and the technology piece is bigger and bigger, so. I didn't mean to cut off any of the questions, I just wanted to clarify the technology piece. Thank you.
John, I don't have a question, but I think that there's a reality that is being nibbled at with this, that, that we haven't really necessarily communicated well to the community, right? So 25-plus years in technology now, of many different variations. And, and a lot of the conversation early, when I started with the board, was around devices enablement, getting, getting digital capabilities into the hands of both teachers and students. I've always laughed when I've been called into an executive's office and I get asked, so when are we done, right? Relative to technology, relative to cybersecurity, when are we done, right? When, I paid you all this money to be safe, when am I safe and when are we done? The reality of the digital landscape is, is the answer to that is never, right? This is a big change that I don't think, again, has been to mention from, from the standpoint of what it means in education, right? We, we know the, the timeframe that a textbook remains viable, right? That textbook, as in many disciplines, has remained viable for many more years than a single digital device will. Wear and tear, obsolescence, Moore's Law. So we're really transitioning into a different educational model that just isn't simply about one-to-one. It just isn't simply about whether or not we've got, you know, OLED displays or projectors or, this is a completely different way to deliver instruction. And with that completely different way, we're going to be coming new, new models and discussions around the economics, how we manage it. I mean, this is, this was always more than just get some devices in a classroom, but now that we're on this path, it's going to change things significantly for all of us in the community, for our students, for our teachers as well. And we, we can't, we can't really just kind of sum that up as we're going to send some teachers to training and we're going to have one-to-one devices, all right? This is going to take major changes in thinking and major, major changes in behaviors, literally across everybody that's involved with an education in this school district.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much for the presentation, it was very informative. Okay, moving on to our next agenda item, 6.01. There is nobody that is actually signed up for public comments, so we'll go ahead and skip that. Moving on to agenda items 7.01 and 7.02, can I have a motion and a second for those?
So moved.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Do you want me to give the summary or?
Oh, if you wouldn't mind.
Call the roll. All right, I'll just give you a summary, these are January's financials. General fund year-to-date receipts, 106,828,000. Year-to-date expenditures, 95,490,000, with an unencumbered fund balance of 99,018,000. Total all-fund year-to-date receipts, 140,044,000. Year-to-date expenditures, 132,545. Unencumbered fund balance for all funds of 114,299,000.
Just a quick question, and it may be something that's a takeaway, but the market is starting to see bond yields and a number of other financial instruments change where we've typically been clocking, you know, a percent or two. I don't know if we've, we've had any discussions about any, what that looks like as, as those continue to move up, because my understanding is the financial markets are expecting a three- to five-year growth in those yields, and I don't know if that favors into our, our revenue plans at all, but something to think about.
We, yeah, we do. And we are considering that with our financial advisors with the Delaware County Bank, and they are, they have come to me in the last month saying, we've actually moved into actual a couple CDs at the time because they can actually do better there, short-term, waiting to see what things are going to happen. So yes, we definitely are addressing that.
Excellent, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, please call the roll.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Byrd?
Yes.
Ms. Davidson?
Yes.
Ms. Cotter?
Yes. Okay, our next agenda items are 8.01 through 8.
We need a separate motion for...
Oh, sorry. Okay. A second, a motion and a second for 7.02?
So moved.
Second.
Can you please give a summary?
Madam President, Members of the Board, this is an annual resolution that we do for the county auditor. We prepare our tax budget in December with, we report to the county our debt payments and expected expenditures. They then turn around and determine the rates that will need to be collected for taxes. This is for the, the collection in 2019, and then you just must certify those each spring, those rates. So this is just a annual resolution.
No questions? Please call the roll.
Ms. Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Byrd?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Ms. Cotter?
Yes. Okay, now moving on to agenda items 8.01 through 8.11. Ms. Lofton, can I give a presentation? Can I have a motion and a second to cover those items?
So moved. Second.
Good evening, President Cotter, Members of the Board. Tonight's consent agenda contains 11 sections involving 167 persons. Section 8.01 is the resignation of 12 classified employees and two substitutes. 8.02 is the resignation of one licensed administrator. 8.03 is the retirement of one classified employee. 8.04 is the retirement of one teacher. 8.05 is a leave of absence for one classified employee. 8.06 is a leave of absence for one teacher. 8.07 is a contractual status change for 29 classified employees. 8.08 is a temporary change of assignment for seven classified employees. 8.09 is a one-time payment for two teachers. 8.10 is the employment of five classified employees and three summer intervention staff. And 8.11 is a variety of licensed employment actions for 102 persons, including summer intervention teachers. Happy to answer your questions.
I was going to suggest we pull out 8.02.
Second.
But we, we can't, we already...
I know, I was joking.
Wow, she's fast on the trigger. I, I don't know, it's, it's, I, I hate to see you're leaving. Not going to say anything embarrassing, but it has been, it is, you're welcome. You personally have taught me quite a bit in this role, and you may not know that, but just observing the professional way you have handled yourself and the respect that I believe you have among all your peers on this floor. I just, I just wanted to say thank you for what you've done, but for how you have done that.
Thank you, Mr. Velardo. Thank you.
I think we'd all like to second that. If there's no other questions, please call the roll.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Byrd?
Yes.
Ms. Davidson?
Yes.
Ms. Cotter?
Yes. Okay, for agenda item 9.01, we do not have any old business. Agenda item 10.01, again, there's no new business. Moving on to 11.01 for donations. As always, we would like to thank all of the general members of the community that donate to our school district. Can I have a motion and a second to accept those donations?
So moved.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Ms. Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Byrd?
Yes.
Ms. Cotter?
Yes. Moving on to agenda item 11.02, we have a number of overnight field trips scheduled. Can I have a motion and a second for those?
So moved.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Byrd?
Yes.
Ms. Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Ms. Cotter?
Yes. Can you please call the roll? Oh, sorry. Sorry. Yes, daylight saving is definitely affecting me today. Agenda item 11.03, can I have a motion and a second to discuss that? Okay, Mr. Scott Dorn?
Good evening, President Cotter, Vice President Davidson, Members of the Board, Dr. Kellogg and Mrs. Hendricks. Bid Package 1 is for the replacement of three packaged HVAC rooftop units at Annhurst Elementary School that serve the office, the gymnasium, and the café. These units are 24 years old, exceeding the normal life cycle of 15 years. Bid Package 2 is for renovations to the existing air handling unit that serves the media center at Central High School. Both projects are per the request of our maintenance department. Bids were solicited in accordance with the Ohio Revised Code on February 8th and 15th. We received three bids that were publicly read on March 1st. The lowest responsible bid for Bid Package 1 was submitted by Regal Plumbing and Heating in the amount of $327,593, including Alternates 1 and 2. Alternates 3 and 4 are for controls work and will be contracted using state term pricing in the amount of $36,653 from Limbach. The lowest responsible bid for Bid Package 2 was also submitted by Regal in the amount of $46,073. Alternate 1 for controls will also be contracted using state term pricing in the amount of $15,169 from Limbach. The total project cost with control work is $425,488. We are recommending that the board accept both bids for HVAC work from Regal in the amount of $373,666.
Just a quick question. Is the, is the air handler replacement at Westerville Central, is it a replacement? Is it premature failure or is it additional capacity?
It's a coil. It's essentially a coil, a reheat coil inside of it that will help with the humidity control.
Okay, so we're adding cap, a capacity or capability with this, right?
You were improving.
Okay, improving, great, thank you.
Any other questions? Can you please call the roll?
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Byrd?
Yes.
Ms. Davidson?
Yes.
Ms. Cotter?
Yes. Moving on to, hold on a second, 11.04, can I please have a motion and a second to discuss this resolution?
So moved.
So seconded.
Tonight, you have a resolution before you to purchase 22 eight-passenger vans for the Transportation Department using capital funds. These vans will have a primary use of transporting students to and from school as well as other curricular services. Quotes were solicited to purchase the eight-passenger vans, and the lowest responsible quote for the eight-passenger vans was submitted by Reichert Ford in the amount of $27,799 per eight-passenger van for a total cost of $611,578. The purchase of these vehicles will lead to improved transportation services for our students and is expected to lead to a significant cost avoidance for the general fund beginning next fiscal year. The district anticipates that we will be able to create an opportunity for cost avoidance for the general fund in excess of $1.4 million over the next three years while improving transportation services for our students, including minimizing lost instructional time for special education students due to transportation arrangements. Some of the capital funds being utilized for this purchase are the results of budget savings over time. For example, this year, we purchased several buses. The cost of the buses came in under the anticipated rate, and we were able to utilize the fund balance of $146,622 to be applied toward the purchase of these vehicles. There is 120-day build-out date on these vehicles. Completing the order this week would allow for the vehicles to be in our possession by mid-July. This would give our Transportation Department enough time for final preparations. It is being recommended to the board to authorize the purchase of these 22 eight-passenger vans.
I don't quite know how to ask this question, so I'm going to ask it because this is a, this is kind of a painful question. Some of, some of this is, some of the catalyst behind purchasing vans is the rising cost through a third party of some students, correct?
Yes, the, the anticipated cost increase from a third-party service to transport students.
Yes. And I've just forgotten the number, but about how many students are transported, transported through that third party right now approximately?
Just over 200.
Over 200. And I'm, I'm getting to this because I just want to make a point. We, in fact, have homeless students in this district, don't we?
Yes, sir.
And those homeless students need to be given transportation.
Yes, sir.
I, I, I'm not saying that other than to have on the record for people that sometimes forget that in the Westerville City School District, we have students that live in situations that we don't always think about. And the fact that we are transporting them and trying to save money at the same time, I cannot tell you how proud that makes me of this district and the Transportation Department trying to do that.
They're an outstanding department.
They are, they are an outstanding department, and they are trying to do something, I, I have thought for a long time we should have some vans for a variety of reasons, but when I was reminded of some of our at-risk students and how this will care for them in a pretty significant way, I just was very proud that we were trying to step up to do that.
I'm, total agreement with Rick. It gives us probably the magic word, which is flexibility, flexibility which we've not had... had in the past. I think that we've needed a number of smaller vehicles that would create opportunities for us to be able to transport students in a number of different situations that we can't now. And many times, those costs are getting absorbed by families or functions that it's just additive cost to them. I'm excited because I absolutely love our Transportation Department, nationally recognized. I don't think that there's any better endorsement of their stewardship and their capability than for us to be able to provide them an opportunity for even more vehicles and even more innovation, because that's what I love about our Transportation Department. They're not just driving from point A to point B. They are innovators and they come up with fantastic ways to increase opportunities and services to our total community, and I'm excited about this. I think this is a great move. I am, I have to tell you, I am floored by the dynamics of the third-party service providers in this. I don't, they know how many kids we transport. They know how many vehicles it takes. The idea that they would actually knowingly price themselves out of the market is fascinating to me, but if it allows us to have a multimillion-dollar cost avoidance in the future, I'm all for it.
How awesome are these two? I love serving with you guys. You guys just made my heart swell, seriously, like this, oh. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Please call the roll.
Mr. Byrd?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Ms. Cotter?
Yes.
Ms. Davidson?
Yes.
Bless you. Okay, moving on to Agenda Item 12.01, we do have some people signed up for public comments. Let me just make a reminder that you will have five minutes to address the board in the public comment portion tonight. Please remember to address the agenda item. No, I don't think this is an agenda item. No, sorry. Again, daylight savings time has been rough on me. A timer will be shown on the screen and Mr. Hershizer will be, call time when the five minutes has elapsed. Please address your comments to the board and now to the audience. Our first speaker this evening is Rob Wesley.
Dr. Kellogg, members of the board. Last December, we received a flyer. I'm the president of the Westerville South Instrumental Music Boosters, as you know. Last December, we received a flyer from the Columbus Symphony Orchestra advertising their Music Educator of the Year Award. This coming Saturday, I have the privilege of introducing John Laswell, who you recognized tonight at their dinner, and he'll also be recognized at a concert afterward. So, twofold, I want to read my introduction for next Saturday as practice, as well as to read it into the record to add to the recognition that you granted him tonight. So, I will begin. Five years ago, in the summer of 2013, a group of eighth graders spent their first day with Westerville South Marching Band practicing for the Fourth of July Parade. That same day was the first day for our new band director, John Laswell. In his new job, John was taking on a band three times the size of his previous marching band in a school that was eight times larger in total enrollment of his previous band. On that day, five years ago, I know the eighth graders were nervous, and I suspect John was as well, as I am a little bit tonight. In a little more than two months from today, those same students will graduate from Westerville South. Over the past five years, those students have become student leaders, helping new band members get over their nervousness. They've matured as musicians, students, and young adults, thanks to the teaching, the guidance, the leadership, and the mentoring of John Laswell, as well as the other teachers at Westerville South. John is the model of a music educator. He helps all of his students regardless of their level of ability to do their best, to work hard, and to reach their potential. Along the way, he demonstrates to his students the lifelong love of music. He directs the Pitt Orchestra at the school musicals, recruiting students to play in this group along with other music educators, as well as adult professional musicians. He also plays percussion with the Westerville Symphony Orchestra, as well as hosting the Westerville Symphony at a band concert, a Westerville South band concert, to demonstrate to those students that they can continue playing music long after they graduate. John also teaches them giving back to the community. Every year, as you're probably aware, in December, South gathers donations for Westerville Caring and Sharing. Past few years, John's classes have led the school in gathering donations. Over those two years, he's gathered over $5,000 from his students to donate to that charity. Also, as you're aware, it's a tradition with the Westerville schools that seniors can choose a district employee to give them their diploma at graduation. Over the past four years, many band students have asked John to give their diploma. This year, many who were in that group of eighth graders his first year will choose him, including my son, Ian. They'll ask John to do that, and that will complete their high school journey the way it began with John Laswell. And I'm sure he'll have many more students in the years to come at Westerville South. So, with that, it's my great privilege to introduce John Laswell as the Columbus Symphony Orchestra Music Educator of the Year in Secondary Education, as well as the Westerville South Director of Bands. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, our next speaker is Kathy Shelton.
Good evening, President Cotter, Dr. Kellogg, and members of the board. My name is Kathy Shelton, and I am the president of the Westerville North Theater Boosters. And I am here on behalf of our theater families to thank you, to thank the Board of Education, as well as Dr. Kellogg, Mr. Yancey, and the rest of the administrative team for all of your support, both financial and moral, for the Westerville North Theater Program this year. This past summer, many of our theater parents, myself included, sent emails to the board, some of the emails being, shall we say, very passionate about the state of the theater facilities at Westerville North High School, and we urged the district to provide upgrades to our auditorium and to our theater light and sound equipment to match that of the other two high schools. Several board members, including Dr. Kellogg and President Cotter, responded very graciously to our emails, letting us know that the district was aware of the needed upgrades and that these needs would be addressed in part this year as well as in upcoming years. Thanks to the generosity and support of the board and the district, the Westerville North Auditorium has now been transformed into the Westerville North Performing Arts Center. We have a new soundboard and a new lighting system with updated fixtures and replacement light bulbs. We have a beautiful cyclorama, which allows for a variety of background lighting and effects. We have a newly repaired floor, and we have stunning new curtains, which consist of the grand drape and the side tormentors and teasers. We also know that the district has supported our student thespians, our newly returned director, and the entire theater program in other ways this year beyond just the facility upgrades, and we would like to express our appreciation for this additional support. We know that some of you have attended our recent productions of The Addams Family, Miracle on 34th Street, and Mary Poppins, and you were able to experience firsthand the difference that upgraded lighting, sound, and curtains can make in a production. Speaking as both the parent of a four-year thespian and as the representative of all of our theater families, I felt called to come before you tonight to acknowledge your generosity to our theater program, as well as your recognition of what this program means to our children. There has been an excitement and a positive ambiance among our student thespians, among our directors, and among our parents that has not been present for the past couple of years. And we would like to thank, we, the boosters, would like to thank the board and the administration for the part that you've played in infusing renewed energy into the Westerville North Theater Program. Thank you.
Thank you. And our next speaker is Pam Warwick.
Dr. Kellogg, President Cotter, members of the Board of Education. I'm here representing the Theater Boosters from Westerville South High School. I'm the president of the Boosters Board, and I would just like to thank you on behalf of our booster members, our students, and thanking you and all the parties who are involved for your commitment to theater education in Westerville City Schools. I want to express my sincere appreciation to you for engaging in honest, open, and productive conversation, listening and responding to our concerns related to theater education needs in our high schools, and specifically to our concerns about losing Matthew Wolfe as our director. I am also thrilled that we have, that you have hired for us a principal who works diligently every day for our student needs. I am beyond grateful to have an administration and a Board of Education in Westerville that truly listens and responds to parent concerns. Not only have you taken a significant step toward filling a significant void in our high school arts curriculum, but you have just approved the employment of one of the most gifted theater educators I have ever known. I am confident that Matt Wolfe will grow the theater classes in all of our high schools as he has grown and nurtured extracurricular theater at Westerville South. I know that there are many significant issues and concerns which demand your attention at this time, and I am sincerely appreciative of the decision to provide the support for theater arts in our high school curriculum and to hire an educator of Matt Wolfe's caliber to fill this position. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And our final speaker is Ms. Peg Duffy.
Last fall, I addressed city council one week and addressed you the next week on the very same topic. Now, probably most of you have seen the Westerville Community Recreation Guide, and on page 13, they are telling us about the issue that I had asked. Homestead exemption helps some reduce property bills. There are programs in place to assist seniors and residents meeting certain requirements. Low-income seniors and Ohioans with disabilities within Ohio adjusted gross income not exceeding $32,200 can reduce their property tax bills with the homestead exemption. Now, that amount is for a household. Social Security is not included in that because it's not taxed in Ohio. That's from W-2s and 1099s. And what this does is exempt the first $25,000 of the valuation from taxation. So, we always use that $100,000 as the typical. That would mean that that property would be, for tax purposes, would be assumed to be $75,000. Now, there is a qualifier in the way the law is written that you can't get more in your homestead exemption if your property is less than that. I don't think we have, in the Westerville School District, many, if any, properties valued at only $25,000. Now, I am asking you, and you're probably thinking, why are you asking us? We're the school board. Everybody we deal with is young. They're not the old folks who want the homestead exemption. You're wrong. You need to be talking. All right, it might be your parents. It might be that little old lady who sits next to you in church. It might be someone you know through the community. And remember, this homestead exemption, once you have it, it is portable. So, when you downsize, you move into that condo, if you've had the homestead exemption, you may continue with it. Income situations might change, so perhaps you make too much this year, but something happens next year, particularly if a person is widowed. And more importantly, the younger people need to know about this because you know every time we have a levy on the ballot, what the senior citizens complain about hearing, they say to the person who comes around, "My taxes are so high." And let's face it, we have to admit that the greater portion of our property tax bill is the school taxes. And the answer that seniors often get from that person working on the levy committee is, "Well, if you can't afford it, move out." We've got to stop that. We have to educate those people, as well as all who might be eligible for the homestead exemption. So, how about doing something like the city did and start getting information out?
Thank you for reminding us all how important it is to share this information with members of our, our senior members of our community, Peg. Agenda Item 13.01, are there any board comments?
Dr. Kellogg, this is going to come at you, sorry. I'm going to put you in the hot seat a little bit. So, Wednesday is National School Walkout Day. I would like you to talk a little bit about how our school district, our principals, teachers are going to handle this.
So, we've sent out communication last week or the week before, both to families with some information related to it, and talked to our principals. And I've talked to several principals. In fact, I talked to both my student advisory groups, North last week and South today, the topic came up. And so, as I understand it, the recommendation is for students to have a walk at a prescribed time for prescribed amount of time, 17 minutes. And our position on this is that our first goal is to keep everybody safe. So, I know that our principals have reached out and talked to student leaders who are interested in being part of this demonstration, and they are talking with each other about how this can be done in a way that isn't disruptive to the school, keeps everybody safe. I know, for example, at Westerville North, they've actually designated an area that they're going to quadrant off with Coen, so students are being told where to go so that we can ensure that there's safety and security around whatever is going on, supervise it. I think the student body are receptive to that kind of planning with the buildings so that everybody's safe. They have the opportunity to express their voice in a democratic fashion. Nobody is in harm's way, and onward we go. So, I know at each building, we're going to support the students by giving them their space, providing them the opportunity to participate, and just supervise the event. If there are additional student-led activities as part of that, that will be of their accord. I know, for example, in Upper Arlington, some of these have happened in places outside of the timeframe. I know in Upper Arlington and then some other school districts, for example, student-led reading of the names from the students who lost their lives in Florida, or other kinds of activities. The other piece of this that we have to be open and honest about is that there's mixed feelings about what the date, what that event is about. And not everybody, when it's couched around gun control, not everybody has the same perspective on what that should look like. And so, we just need to be mindful as we go into this, there's a variety of opinions on how to address the issue, but we share in our concern about the safety of our kids. So, I think we'll be fine on that given day.
Okay. Secondly, I'm going to put you back in the hot seat. I'm going to ask you and your staff to please consider doing a town hall-type setting for our students that need and want a place to express what would help and make them feel safe, maybe give them some resources, ways to change things if they need to, get something like that on the books for our kids.
I appreciate that, and that is a part of a number of different things that the district has talked about. So, last week, members of our team who were responsible for a couple of components, we met with law enforcement from the various jurisdictions that we work with. We also brought in a third-party individual who specializes in school safety, actually works for a company called Safeguard Risk Solutions. They specialize internationally on school safety, probably one of the leading experts on the topic. So, we invited him into the meeting as well. We kind of bucketed things into four areas for discussion. Number one had to do with our emergency response plans as exist today, so we wanted to collectively ensure that the plans we have in place are comprehensive, because that's become part of the problem, I think, not part of the problem, but part of the current climate, is we're very focused on a specific kind of school violence issue. There are multiple vulnerabilities that we need to be aware of. So, we have emergency response plans to those. We want to make sure that those plans represent best current thinking, that training's available, that we have the training in place, and that when we actually enact one of those plans, that people respond in the way that they're supposed to. And that, those are some pieces around that that we want to continue to review as a current status. The second... The second one would be facilities. What is it that can be done to current facilities as potential upgrades that may enhance school safety? And we, that's gotten a lot of conversation nationally in an area in which we want to talk about. We are pursuing several different resources for getting some better outside agencies to give us a sense of what we can be doing around, what are the opportunities to improve school, particularly because we're in the beginning, we're in a, when a facilities master planning discussion, and if you followed on Thought Exchange, school safety was a top, top component. So we, we want to look at that, and so we're going to determine what's the best strategy for kind of doing an analysis of our current buildings and making some recommendations. The third bucket is probably the hardest one to get your hands wrapped around, that's mental health. In all these stories, in all these tragic events, there's always the bottom line of what was that individual's mental health? What do people know about that individual's mental health? What were the red flags that that individual may have been displaying, which oftentimes were reported, and I can come back to that piece in a second. And so when you have a population of 15,300 students, the odds are you have a number of students with mental health issues, and then within that population, some students whose mental health issues are more significant and give us more cause. And so we want to take a look at how we organize around that and deliver services to those kids and are able to kind of keep an eye on the landscape for those red flag behaviors. And then the fourth bucket would be what you're referring to, which is the two-way communication piece, and what are our means of collecting information? I know there's, as we've gone through staff meetings, there are staff who have very strong feelings and they have a desire to have communication with us. The emails, which represent just the pinhead of the concern that's out there that have come to myself and probably yourself, represent a desire from our community to talk about this issue some more. And I agree, I think our student bodies, as I've discovered as we talked today, not discovered, wasn't surprised, but I know that they have some thoughts on what kind of conversation we can have, what can they do? We had a long conversation about that at South today that I think was constructive. So we are in the process of looking at that whole piece. The one thing I would say to anybody who's paying attention on this whole thing is, beyond all these other things, I'd say this. In every instance of a tragic event in a school of this sort, as you read the backstory, there is often indicators that the young person who committed the atrocity was a known entity with behaviors that raised concerns. Oftentimes, those concerns were being addressed. Oftentimes, those concerns were noticed but maybe not reported. And so there's always that storyline. And then I want to flip to the other side, which is in every instance that I can think of in recent memory where a plan that was being devised was thwarted, it was also thwarted because some individual in the community, whether it was a student or a parent or teacher, picked up on it, reported it, and there was an appropriate response to deter it. That was our case in our bad day at South when we had the lockdown. We had a report that caused us to act. And so as I was talking to kids today, I used this analogy, and it may not be a good one, but it's the one that comes to mind. When you sit in an airport for an hour, how many times did it make the announcement? You know the announcement I'm talking about, about your luggage. It's a constant reminder to be diligent, right? And whereas we don't want to do announcements like that every 15 minutes to student bodies to be constantly diligent and to our parents, but I think it's incumbent upon us to be constantly diligent about what's going on around us and not be shy to report. And so that's, that still remains fundamentally one of the most effective defense measures to any of this. And that just doesn't go for students who come in intending to do harm to others. It's also about students who intend to do harm to themselves knowingly or doing things to themselves. Let's take the other crisis that's going on in Ohio with obituate, opiates, and that epidemic, which is, if you put the numbers to that in society, right, really gets kind of ugly. And so these are those places where the best thing we can do as a community, however you want to define that, is be together, be aware, take care of one another, and don't be afraid to address those things and bring help to other people. That's a key ingredient. So I don't want to say that these other components aren't important, we need to work on them. I think we need to work on them. As we talked to our law enforcement, they were appreciative, was my takeaway of it, that we were being thoughtful and purposeful about what our approach should be before we get too far ahead of ourselves and start devising solutions to something that... So one of my, one of my pet peeves is we often talk about something as a problem and has a solution. And problems have solutions? This is not a problem. This is a dilemma. And dilemmas don't have simple solutions. Dilemmas have multiple strategies, some of which may or may not be effective. That's what we're talking about in this situation. So someone who says the solution to this problem is this, is cheapening the situation. This is a dilemma, and it involves mental health, it involves lots of components that need to be addressed. So this is a long-winded answer to the yes, we do need to engage our students two ways. One is to listen to them about their concerns, and two, give them appropriate things that they can do. And I think the event coming up with the walk, the 17-minute walkout, and the way we've decided to address that through support and give them their space is one means of saying to them, yes, we understand that this is important to you and we want to support that. I think there's other ways as well. I have no, I could get in trouble for this one, I have no confidence that either at the national level or state level viable solutions and resources are going to come raining down on us that are going to take care of this for us. We're going to have to roll up our sleeves and work collectively. If we happen to benefit from something from state or national, great, not that we're not going to advocate for that, but I think really this is the best, the best start is roll up our sleeves locally. We know our community, we know our kids, we know our resources. Think about what we have in the community. Aside from Concord Counseling and a number of other agencies, we also have Neighbor to Neighbor, we have Neighborhood Bridges, we have Warm, we have lots of entities that when we bring them together, bring hope and raise people up and reduce the trauma that they experience, that becomes part of the package that addresses, deals with mental health that brings us sometimes to these situations. And so this community does a great job of that. It's one of our strengths. We should continue to capitalize on that, build on that, remind ourselves of that. So we are going to look at our emergency response plans. How well-written are they? What's the training? Do we do them the right way? We are going to take a look at our facilities. We were already talking about mental health, what kind of services can we increase to make our performance better, and we want to continue looking at communication chains down the line. The last piece I put in there is that part of our, one of our next targeted efforts is that National School Violence Prevention Week that's coming up, where, thank you, next week, where we have, through our district level, given tools to our principals and their staff so they can go back and create events, which I think gets at some of what you're talking about. What can students do? What can they say? What's the number-one thing students can do? They know before we know. Let us know. Tell us. Don't worry about it. Our goal is to take care of people as best we can and prevent any more of this, these tragedies. So long-winded answer to your question.
Well, thank you. I think the students and teachers will appreciate it. They really, they need to talk, so.
I have, I'd like to say it's going to be real quick, I don't know if it will be. I made a commitment to a number of citizens that reached out to me this week, and it's been something that I've been tracking, and it's something that many people may not have been. But House Bill 512 has been introduced into the Ohio General Assembly, and I'm actually going to read a couple of items from the summary that I think will highlight why we should all be concerned as citizens in the state of Ohio about what's being proposed in the, in the House. The bill summary itself says it creates a Department of Learning and Achievement to oversee primary, secondary, and post-education, post-secondary education. And it specifies that that new department, the Director of Learning and Achievement, who will be over that, is appointed by the Governor with a vice and consent by the Ohio Senate. What's interesting is, is that it goes on to say that it transfers to the Department most of the powers of the duties of the State Board of Education, the Superintendent of Public Instruction, the Department of Higher Education, and all of the powers of the duties of this Chancellor of Higher Education, the Department of Higher Education, and the Governor's Office of Workforce Transformation. Now, why this is important, and for, something for you to consider, is that the State Board of Education is a majority-elected body. So think about this for just a second. We're going to take a majority-elected body that has the same responsibilities that a public board of education has, which is the superintendent serves at the luxury and convenience of a board, right? Because that's one of the key things that they do. Should be noted that the State Board and the superintendent are codified in the Ohio Constitution. It is a constitutional mandate. And now, we're going to take and eliminate those departments, condense them all, and put them under a political appointee. If anybody doesn't see the problems with that, you need to look a little bit closer. This is, this is terrible. I'm going to be frank about it. And if we think about where the priorities of both the feds and the state are as it relates to education, I am not making this as a political statement, but think about this for just a second. In the news cycle, we are hearing that we are going to arm and potentially pay merit pay to teachers in classrooms. In the same vein, you may not be knowing, or may not be paying attention to what else is happening in the Department of Education at the federal level, which is the stripping and gutting of loan forgiveness for teachers. So let me get this straight. We're going to pay extra to have armed forces on the ground in the classroom who are supposed to be there doing instruction, and we're going to take away the opportunities for them to improve their teaching credentials and be better educated teachers in our classrooms? To me, like I said, it's not a political statement, it's a priority problem, right? And when we look at what's going on within the state as it relates to House Bill 512, we're talking about putting politics and political appointees even more over education than they currently are. And I would point out that some of the sponsors of this bill were the same architects of the charter school system that resulted in a major catastrophe. Again, not a political statement, but let's keep in mind that we had a charter school, a massive charter school, that did not have an elected public board, that used citizens' taxpayers' money and closed down. And it's a bad thing for all of those teachers and staff and administrators that were involved, but there was no elected body representing the community that safeguarded those kids. And that's our job. I believe passionately about it. At the end of the day, our number-one job is the kids. And they're talking about a structure now in the state of Ohio that is going to take away power from public education, take away from administrators, from teachers, take away power from elected officials at the local level, and nobody should be happy with this at all. Please, call your elected representatives. Have this bill killed in committee.
Do you have any comments?
What?
Do you have any comments? Stop.
I'm going to cross off my comments about HB 512. Cross off my comments about Dr. Kellogg and his hot seat. I'd like to just say that President Cotter is doing a fine job. And that's my comment for tonight.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to item 14.01. The Board will meet in executive session on March 15th at 6:00 p.m. and in regular session on Monday, April 9th, 2018 at 6:00 p.m. at the Early Learning Center, which is, of course, this building. And at this time, I would like to entertain a motion and a second for adjournment.
Second.
Can you please call the role?
Mr. Velardo.
Yes.
Ms. Davidson.
Yes.
Mr. Byrd.
Yes.
Ms. Cotter.
Yes. Thank you all for attending this evening. We are adjourned.